801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, March 5th, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go on to close the meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Perfect timing.
Council members, this is now your session.
Okay. Personnel Committee, uh, mayor.
Let's, um, well, let's... Does everybody have a copy of the profile that was provided?
The one from...
I think I'll go and pick mine up, no problem.
Make sure everybody's got the information in front of them before we can get started.
Mayor, can I suggest, before we get into the profile, I think there's some steps leading up to that that we need to define. One is, do we have a consensus for a search? The next thing is, how long a search? Then, I would suggest the last thing we do is go over the profile. And even before we do that, I'm gonna pass this around. I emailed it today. And it's okay, I'm gonna read it because I think it's extremely important.
Team, how about that?
Yeah, I noticed, I was on Facebook, what's that site called? "I grew up in Portsmouth," which I did, and probably most of the people here did. And I saw one of my colleagues used the word "team," and it got me to thinking. And I said, "What is a team?" So, let me read this. "Team members operate with a high degree of interdependence. They share authority and responsibility for self-management, are accountable for the collective performance, and work toward a common goal and shared rewards. Team becomes more than just a collection of people when a strong sense of mutual commitment creates synergy, thus generating performance greater than the sum of the performance of its individual members." And in this case, we are a team. We're not a white team, we're not a black team. We're a team of elected officials that were elected because people had confidence that we were the right people to manage our city and to make proper decisions on the direction that our city is going in. So, thank you, Mayor.
I couldn't agree more. Well done. Okay, Dr. Edmonds, you had your hand up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, um...
Want to swallow first?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Councilman Moody said that we do need to come to a consensus or vote on... But I want to make sure that we understand clearly. Are we gonna vote on it or do a consensus in here?
Ahead.
Because we need to be clear on what we're doing.
Absolutely.
So that people that are in this room will take away from here what we've done. In the correct way.
Yeah, and to your point, Bishop, I think when we do a consensus, we've got a few things to do a consensus on. We just go around the table, say yea or nay.
Yeah. Just go from left to right and come around.
And the first one is a search.
Yeah. Yea.
Nay.
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 Yea.
Nay?
Yes. We won.
There's no search.
No search.
No search, that's what it was.
The question was, do we want a search?
And we said nay.
Yeah.
We said nay.
And we said nay.
You don't want a search or you do want a search?
No, no, no.
Nope, nope. No lobbying, Mayor.
I'm not lobbying.
Yeah, you are, you're lobbying.
I am clear, I wanted to make a statement, and I do believe there is still freedom of speech in this room, is it not?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The thing that I was saying is this. I think we, first of all, need to make sure of what we are speaking of when we speak. There's been a lot of information, and I've always been one of being upfront. I had the role of integrating Portsmouth Public Schools and assigning the children to the schools that they attended. It was not a railroad process, and it was based on the facts and the informations that we had at time. I'm praying that we are not making a silver wall, and I see it, just as I mean it. As we went through, and those of you who are here in the city at the time I went through it, to bring us together on one accord, realize the fact that following that, I had back-to-back heart attacks and open-heart surgeries. So, when you're talking about putting your feelings in your heart into what the city is all about, I've done it. I've demonstrated it, and I've come back because I love the city. And I don't like the idea of someone calling someone someone. We are a team. We are a Portsmouth family. And if we can't come together and demonstrate and show to the city that we are a family, then we are the wrong people in the positions. And I say that very openly because the things that I'm picking up, I picked up years ago as a young lady, when rocks were thrown at me. And I don't intend to live through that kind of foolishness again. We've come a long ways, we've reached out, and we've assisted one another, and Bill Moody, you know it.
Absolutely.
You know exactly where I'm coming from. And I'm saying, I'm speaking from my heart because I've lived it and I experienced it. Yes, there are new people here. But we don't throw away the heart and the core of the city of Portsmouth because of some biases or something that we have not had an opportunity to talk about. The other thing I'd like to say is this. We have heard all over the city, I have, of what it is that people are saying. And I'm saying to myself, but no one's saying that to me. And I'm sitting at the tables with them. If we are going to do things, let's be above board. And let's bring the facts out on the table and have an opportunity to express our views. And I said, "Lord, help them have mercy on us." Because I believe that we need love, we need peace, we need mercy, and we need to get rid of biases and hidden agendas as we conduct the people's business. We are, we say Portsmouth family, and I believe in the family. Let's not degrade the Portsmouth family.
I commend you for your courage and your voice, Marlene. So, what we're...
No, ma'am, I like to ask questions.
Hold on. Look, Danny, you're gonna have to wait your turn, okay? Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Randall, what, are you voting yea or nay for the search?
Right near, I'm not voting anything until we can get... When I get a call on some of the stuff we're getting, I think we need to go in a session and talk about us first before we can do diligence for doing what we need to do. And I stand on my constitutional rights to do that.
Mr. Meeks?
You asked for a census, you got the census. I think that stands.
Well, I think Ms. Randall's...
I mean, that's, everybody here has grown. Ms. Randall hits green, she hits red, she hits blue.
I think Ms. Randall just said what she's doing.
I agree, but you asked for a census a second ago, and you got it.
But Ms. Randall has since changed her mind. You said we can't change our minds?
No, that's what we did when...
That's what I'm hearing.
Hold on, you can change your mind, but that's what's got us here in the beginning.
Yeah, we...
So, let's be clear on the question so we make sure everybody understands. Do we either want a search or not want a search?
That was the first question. That question's been answered.
We can't be neutral, we gotta have... We either have to have a search or not have a search. And if we don't have a search, then we need to talk about what we do. And then, if we do have a search, then we need to talk about what we do. So, the first thing we gotta determine is do we want a search?
The question was already answered.
It was answered, it was answered.
Yeah, it was answered.
So, are you in favor of doing a search?
No, I am not.
Okay.
I commend you, Marlene. That took a lot of courage.
No, it didn't take courage.
She loves the city.
And I don't need you speaking for me. Okay, no, let's get that clear. First of all, too many people are speaking for me. The people who elected me are the ones who speak for me. You don't have that right.
Exactly.
All right? And I resent you trying to take my right of way from me. Okay? And I'm saying it openly because I've been this route before, and I think it is embarrassing to the city, some of the calls I have gotten, and I'm bringing it out here on the board because I don't believe in sweeping anything under the table. When we cannot demonstrate we are a family in the way we have done it through the years, there is something wrong. And I believe that there is a God upstairs who reigns high and looks low. And I do not need someone to try to dictate to me what I'm supposed to do. I've been there, and I've done that, and I've been called all kinds of names for doing that. But I believe "to thine own self be true." And I've worked with every one of you around here. And I'm gonna say it because I feel it within my heart. I have not seen or felt as much animosity and ill will as I have felt in sitting at the table with this council. And I pray that we, before we do anything, that we can have a word of prayer. Because I don't think we're in a prayer and pray mood, prayer mood at all. I think we need to look at ourselves and not jump and be railroaded into anything. And I refuse to be a part of it. I've spoken.
So, with that, if we, you've got a majority to not do a search. Now, we have two positions that are in an interim position. Are we in favor of making those two people permanent or are we in favor of leaving them interim until we come to some kind of agreement?
I think we ought to leave them interim until we come to some type of agreement.
I do.
Okay. Elizabeth?
No.
You want to make them permanent?
I do.
Permanent?
Permanent.
I think we need to hold them.
Interim?
In an interim until we can come together.
Okay, interim?
Permanent.
I want to get through the budget season, and then, look, I don't want, I don't want to try to make any wholesale changes until we get through our budget season.
Okay, so you're interim permanent?
Interim for now.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? We're not gonna do a search.
Where we at, Mayor, where we at now?
We're not...
Right now, we're nowhere. We have our two folks at an interim position until we revisit this matter. Right now, there's not a consensus to do a search. There's not a consensus to make them permanent. So, they're interim until we revisit this.
Well, in essence, we have spun our wheels. And I think we have done a disservice to two public servants that are proven...
And it was created by us.
...quantity.
Let me ask you a question.
Thank you.
What were you thinking, Dr. Edmonds?
What about?
When you say interim, what timeframe were you thinking?
I didn't have a timeframe in mind. Maybe ninety or hundred twenty days, which is normal for a search.
Yeah, but we're not doing a search.
We're not doing it.
Not doing a search.
So, do we want to revisit this interim issue in how many days? You're saying after the budget season?
What purpose does it do if we're not doing the search? We're just keeping these gentlemen hanging in limbo?
Yes, sir.
Which is a disservice to them. It's a disservice to the city to even keep this issue going. To Ms. Randall's point, that this thing needs to be put behind us.
I guess you're right, if we're not gonna do a search, I mean...
Are you on board?
So, if we're not gonna do a search, then what do we do, Mayor? What do we do from here, Mayor? I'm talking, I'm asking.
Okay.
What's your... I'm asking you, what are you suggesting we do if we're not gonna do a search now? What do you suggest?
Well, if we're not gonna do a search now, and we have two people in an interim position, we either now have to act on, if both of them are in agreement to taking it permanent, we need to act on making them permanent or act on leaving them interim until such time to revisit again. One doesn't make the other one automatic.
That's right.
So, if you want to leave them in an interim, I think what we discussed when we interviewed and talked about doing this after the budget season.
No, we offered them their positions. The council, the council sent the Personnel Committee to those gentlemen. In fact, we shook their hands, and you sent us with the task of structuring an agreement, which we did. And we were opposed to act on that agreement when the subject of a search came up. So...
In the subject of the search, last week when we met, we left saying that we were gonna do a search, right?
No.
What did we leave saying that we were gonna do?
We didn't know.
We didn't know.
No, we knew.
No, we didn't know. That's why that had to be determined tonight.
That's all we had to call meeting.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
That's not exactly right.
Yeah. Hold on, Ms. Randall has the floor.
I'm sorry.
And then you can... Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I'd like to say, "To God be the glory for us being here." The other thing I say, let us have an open heart and a willing spirit to communicate. Without communications, we can't go anywhere. We not only do we split here, we split the city. We've been hearing a lot of negatives roaming around in this city. And I've been in this city, I think, longer than anybody. I came here when I wasn't even wanted. But at the same time, some of my best friends represent people that are in this city of all races, nationalities, and groups. And I think that we need to go back to what the Bible says to us, to love our neighbor. These are our neighbors that have been here, who've been working for us. And I think what we've put them through, I really have a problem with it because we have not been true. You know, there's a thing that says, "To thine own self be true." And we cannot railroad one another. These gentlemen are fine gentlemen. I don't have any problems owing for them. I know them both personally. And I know what they are capable of doing because I knew them when they came in here. They have my support, but my concern is what we are looking at around this table. I think we need to come together first.
I think from our last meeting, I think what prompted this meeting was for us to come together to look at the criteria.
There you go.
The things that would necessitate for us going into a search.
No.
No, we, this meeting was to decide whether we're gonna do a search, and then the length of the search. And then, we were gonna review the criteria for the ad...
That's what this meeting was supposed to...
Review the criteria.
So, I missed, I must have missed something somewhere along. I think I was at the same meeting.
Perhaps.
Okay. Yes, sir.
We created this mess, all right? Really, me and you created all this. We created, the city is not nobody at this table but me and you. All right? Me and you created this mess, and we should fix it tonight. And that's ratifying them to make permanent position in this city as city manager, city attorney. And only you can fix it, just like I can fix it. Just like we caused this uproar of not just white or black, but the whole entire city. The whole entire city's armed. It's a right or wrong issue. It's not a black or white issue. And both of those guys will give us hundred and ten percent. We don't have to look anywhere. They're right there to look at.
Nobody ever questioned that. And nobody ever said white or black.
Right, but I'm saying...
Until it came out. What we are discussing is process, and process and due diligence. When Janie Culpepper was an interim person, we went through the process. Because EEO can come back at us if need be if we don't continue to be in the process and start a precedent that we can always determine. So, when we talked last meeting and coming to this meeting, it was my understanding at this call meeting was to go over the criteria, to talk about how long the search's gonna be, and what the criteria was for the city manager and for the city attorney.
No, sir.
Ms. Moody, you wait your turn.
All right. We had the right to hire them as full-time because they were already in an interim position. We did not have to put a search out. We had the right to do that. I would like for George, even though he's part of this, to... Am I correct? Without doing a search, because you're already are interned, are doing the intern part?
Well, you could hire someone who's not even an interim. You can, you have that discretion, not recommended because you don't know what you're getting. But you certainly have the right to hire someone who's in an interim position, just as you have the right to do a search to fill the position.
Without any backlash?
Without any backlash. You have a great deal of discretion at your level.
May I say something?
Yep, yes, sir.
You know, we've decided as a council, and this is a... Our government is a government of consensus. When there's a consensus, we move on. We don't go behind and try to undo a consensus of council. It becomes all of our decision at that point. By not deciding as a council tonight not to do a search, leaving these two gentlemen in an interim position is nothing short of doing a disservice to them. If we're not gonna do a search, these gentlemen are proven commodities. They're not strangers that walked in off the sidewalk. They're not strangers that we're interviewing. They're strangers that we have faith in. In fact, they're getting ready, we're getting ready to go into the budget season. Mr. Rowe is gonna be working his butt off for this city, for this council, to put together a budget. He's already been doing that. And to leave him dangling, and to leave our city attorney dangling for some sixty, ninety days with no search gonna be done is nothing short of torture. It's professional torture is what it is.
I don't disagree with you. I think we got the best.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't disagree. I think we got the best in John and John. But I also feel like, as being municipal government, that there is still protocol and process that we... That's why, in the beginning, I'll say, that's the reason I changed my mind. Not because I coerced anybody to change my mind. Because I was looking at the process. And so, I agree with you, Bill, they are the best. I've learned more about city runnings and doings with John being here than I have since the time I've been on council. So, I agree with you on that. But I just disagree with the way in which we're going about doing it. There's no consistency with us as a council.
Oh, there is. Let me share something with you, Bishop. James Wright was just named the city engineer. There's no protocol there. He's a good man, he's a known commodity. Our city manager had faith in him, named him department head. No search was done.
He can do that because he's, we've given him that authority to do that.
Yeah, just like we have that authority. Okay? Let's see, Hal Short was named Director of PRHA. No search was done. Very competent individual. Agree with both of those. Okay, let's see...
I'm just talking about...
Director of Social Services. Lady Jackie, gee, I can't even think of her last name.
Scott.
Yeah, okay, thank you. She was just named to her position. No search was done. City manager had faith that she could do the job, and he had that authority, just like this council has the authority. We didn't leave Beck Barfield. Beck came out of retirement. He was appointed to his position, and I'm thankful that he was. But no search was done.
Just like Alethea was brought back the same way out of retirement to be a citizen.
Alethea was brought in, absolutely, to fill a void in Social Services, and she was in retirement. And I was very thankful that she was available to fill that position. All of those were done without searches. So, it was no violation of process because city manager had the authority to do it. And I think there were good decisions on all of those folks.
Oh, I agree.
And so, to leave these people dangling under some fuzzy thing about the process is a disservice, not only to them, it's a disservice to the city because it just perpetuates this bad mood and ugly feelings, as Ms. Randall stated, has been going on. We need to put this to bed so we can tackle the important issues of the city. And by leaving them in an interim position, we're not doing that.
Right.
Ms. Randall?
I'd just like to say this. I never thought it would come to this point. The two gentlemen here, I hold in high esteem all the way through. I have no problems with them, and they know that. I would write any recommendations in the world for you. My concern is the way we are doing things. One of the things it was understanding, and I will support those, but not at this time. And I tell you why, because of process. Because of process.
What was the process in those ones that I just mentioned?
Okay, we all had come to some agreement, Bill. You were around, you remember those things. And I can remember when there was no process, so I'm not going back there. But the thing that I'm saying is, we need to give them an opportunity to follow through with what they are doing if they want to remain in the position.
They've already stated that they want to remain.
All right, well, then, give us a chance to come together because it has not been a togetherness with this council. And I can outline and demonstrate and tell exact examples and what was said. We have always been able to talk as a council and be above board. I'm not finding that happening. And I'm bringing it out because there's no need in sweeping stuff under the table. I've been able, if I had something to say to Councilwoman Simmons, I could go to Councilwoman Simmons and talk with her. And it was respectfully that we could exchange things. The demeanor of some of us around this table is not of the character of this council. And right near, I'm out of character because I haven't had to say something like this in years. But I don't like the feeling, and I'm seeing it. And I felt the sting from some of the ugliness that's here. And I'm seeing it. I'm seeing it up front. We are family, and we ought to act as family. I don't have anything against them. In fact, they are my friends, and they are experts. They do a dynamic job. The problem I have is demeanor of the council. And I think that's where we need to string things out. I have no problem in supporting them. The demeanor of the council is what I have a problem with.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Ms. Randall. This has nothing to do with anybody on that side of the table.
There you go.
This is all about us, and it is not about us being a family. It is about us having the you-know-what to be the elected officials that we are.
Stand our ground.
There are ninety-some thousand people in this city, at least half of which voted for some of us sitting here.
Sitting at this table.
And expect us to act accordingly and act professionally and mean what we say and say what we mean. And we all want to talk about process. And we all know, I'm the one that sat here and said, when some folks wanted to do a search, and I said, "Why?" And we talked it through. And five of us very strongly said, "Yes, you know what, Elizabeth? That's a pretty good idea." And we agreed. And so, that became our process. If somebody had said to me, as they did on the phone yesterday... If somebody had said to me, as they did on the phone yesterday, "You know, a lot of people feel like they haven't had a chance, we ought to open it up," I might have been swayed another way. But that isn't how the meeting went. The meeting went, five of us were real strong, Ms. Randall was kind of strong, Mayor, you were against it. That's fine. But that was the decision, just like cutting off the TV cameras. That was the decision. If one thing Jim Holly taught me, it's consensus is consensus, and mean what you say and say what you mean. And then we stick by each other. And this is what I think has, I mean, yes, this has gone way out of proportion. We all know that. You've been way out of proportion. Everybody's been way out of proportion.
That's true.
But, but the fact of the matter is, no matter how you behave, or Ms. Randall behaves, or any of the rest, I gotta, I have to answer to the people who elected me too, who live in all corners of this city. And I'm embarrassed right now at our collective behavior because we're not behaving professionally. If we come, if five of us agree to go jump off the Churchill Bridge, then that's what all seven of us need to do.
I don't think so.
I mean, I, I think we have to, to...
Even the ones that can't swim.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I just think we need to, to be mindful and respect each other's opinion.
Exactly.
Yeah, now...
Even if we change.
If, if Ms. Randall tonight, if, if she doesn't want to, if, if, as far as I'm concerned, parliamentary tonight, when Ms. Randall says she's not ready to decide, then we're not ready to decide, then, then the search fails. It was three to three, it fails. So either we, you know, we, we can duke it out tonight, and I'll stay here all night if you want to. But I don't think we do anybody outside this room us any good if we don't, you know, may not make a decision. We can't say, "Well, we, maybe we'll come back and make a decision in 60 days." I, I just think that's wrong.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Hold on.
Get back to the night we did the census. It was five. Ms. Randall was, she was in the middle. She, she liked, she said she liked them, but she didn't know. You are a definite N. We went out of this room, and even you, Mayor, went to them and congratulated them that they had the job. You went to George, "We're going to get on those contracts." Then we, we told Bill and Paige, we sent them as a body to negotiate the contract. If that's not telling somebody they have the job, I, I don't know what is. And then come back and say, for whatever reason, we want to, we want to work the process. Because that night, nobody said anything, and you do have the right to change your mind. But that night, nobody brought up the process. Nobody brought up the search. You were, you were not, you were not on board with hiring them. But we had a census to hire them. Tonight, we have a census not to do the search. Mayor, the writing's on the wall. My phone, since last week, I talked, emailed, just like everybody else. Might not have had as many calls the last two days, but I didn't publish my number there. But I wanted to make sure that the people knew who to get in contact with, to hear their voice. Because those people did put us here. You had 26,000 people put you here. I had 22,000. Bishop had 23. Elizabeth had 17. I don't know what everybody else said, but that's a loud voice.
All right, Ms. Moody?
Well, we're, we're beyond that point. What, what's happened tonight, we, we've taken care of one item on the agenda, and that one item was the foundation. So we decided as a council not to do a search. Okay? And, and now, now we're trying to come to a decision on the fate of these two gentlemen. And I think to say they're great guys, they do a great job, I, I love them to death, but we're going to leave you hanging in limbo. For what reason? We don't know. The, the process. I just explained that we, we, we've hired department heads, we as a city, as a city manager, of competent people that are also good people, likable people. More importantly, they're people capable of doing a job. So the process didn't get in the way of the city manager of making a good decision. And I don't want the word "process" to be used as a smokescreen on, on this council not coming to a decision tonight to take that interim tag off of these two gentlemen. It's doing a disservice to the city for no reason, because a search is not being done. So to leave that interim tag there is a bunch of malarkey. If we leave this room and, and not tell these two gentlemen they got the job, and, and make it official at the next council meeting. It, it, it's a bunch of malarkey. Absolutely.
All right. Dr. Edmonds?
Mayor, thank you, Councilman Moody. I got deterred going through the process from you. When I first came to council and we were dealing with some issues about some persons, and you said, "We have to go through the process." And I asked the question, "What was the process?" And you gave what the process was. Because you said at that time, I can't quote the exact words, but "We have to be transparent" was one of the words. And so when I say "process," I'm saying something from what I was taught as a new council member that had been up here about the same amount of time that Councilwoman Mead had, trying to find my way, and not saying something out of kilter. So I listened to you because you were the senior councilperson. And I learned a lot of things from that. So if I'm out of order with saying "process," it's because that's what I was taught when I came in as a junior councilperson.
But, but, and I respect that, Bishop, but that, we, we've ended the process by not doing a, a search. There's no other step after, to leave the interim tag on these two public servants.
I'm not arguing that.
There's no, there's no other step, there's no other step in the process, unless after they've done the budget and done some work, we decide, "Okay, guys, you're out of here." That, that would be the only other step, because we're not doing a search. So the only other step is, we, we fire them, or we hire them. And that's doing...
It doesn't get any more transparent than what we're doing right now.
There you go.
This sausage is being made in front of the cameras, and that's fine. I, I think that's the way the public needs to see it, to know it's not a backroom deal. They need to know where everybody on this council stands.
And in regards to getting phone calls, I have phone calls from both spectrums. We need to go through, quote, "the process." Or we need to hire John and George just as they are. So you hear it from both of your constituency, from both sides. And I don't think all of the ones that, phone calls that you all got were all in the same venue. Mine were about equally proportionate. And so, there is always a moment to listen to the ear of your constituency, not special groups that you listen to, but your constituency.
Fair to say.
Okay, Ms. Randall, and then we...
This will be the last thing that I would say. I feel as if there is no need for us to rush through the process. We have capable individuals to do the job. One of the things that we need more than anything else is open communication between us as members of council, and not getting it through the media because of what someone else said. We still have freedom of speech, and we know we have the grace of God who's within our hearts. I think these two individuals are top. Because I don't want it misinterpreted. I supported both of them. I worked with both of them probably before many of you ever worked with them. I go back years with them. Our children go back together, so that you can understand where I'm coming from. And one of the things I said, we couldn't find two fine people. But I don't think we negate the effectiveness of doing a good, strong procedure as we have gone through the process.
What procedure is it?
Well, that, I won't address that. I'm respecting the fact that you are chair. The thing is that what we need to do is to sit together with us and go through some things. I don't think there's anyone around this table who has any more respect and in ability and capabilities than I have for you two. We go back a long way. See, I'm not a newcomer around this table. We go back a long way, when we were working to do things in school. And the thing that I'm saying, I don't need someone to try to tell me how I think. I respect both of them. I support you two. But I'm concerned about the process of where we are going.
Wait.
Okay?
So?
And so this is what I'm, I'm saying to you. Let us take time and talk through some things. I support them. I don't want to go out of here that I'm not supporting them. I just feel as if we need more time to come up and say what we want to do.
Okay. Last comment, and then we're going to wrap this up.
I think you're sure.
Ms. Randall, with, with all due respect, you don't support them. If, if you did, you, you, you would say, "Gentlemen, I got all the confidence in the world in you, and, and let's take that interim tag off your name." You know, I've heard you say, "I love them, I support them."
And they know that.
No, I don't think they do know that.
Oh, yes, they do.
And...
And I don't want you to get started with me either.
I'll get started in a heartbeat.
Okay, let's, let's keep this meeting going.
If this council leaves this room tonight with, with deciding, and we've already decided we're not doing a search, if we leave this room tonight with this interim tag still on these two gentlemen, I want to know what the motive is. Because it's not a process, because there's no other process to go, as I pointed out earlier. It's either leave them in interim status for eternity, or to fire them. Now, now, which is it? Because there's no other step in the process. There is no search.
Let's, uh, let's go to our interim. They either are going to be interim or permanent. And if they're interim, then we'll revisit this at a later time. And we're going to do this one more time, and then we're going to wrap this up. Dr. Edmonds?
Before I say, before I say, I never had any problem about them becoming permanent.
That's right.
And so, I just, I never had any problem like that. And I don't think it's right for us to judge another person and when they say something from an integrity's point of view. We can't do that. The newspaper does that or not. Gary Hocky writes things and turns them around, and I found out that they're not always the right words that come out. And I think Danny Meads might be able to address that. But needless to say, I think they're super. And we've already voted around the table. I was just trying, and this is not for the audience to peep in on, but I was just trying to say that there is a process. And I think that from now on, we need to stick to one way or the other in how we're going to do it. Because when we first asked the two, John and George, to become interim, we, they knew that we were asking them to be interim and that we were going to do a search. And then a couple of months went past, and we just liked what we were seeing done. I was at the top of the herd on that, and still am. And so, we voted, and I'm with the process. We voted, we got a consensus. The democratic process is that we recognize the right of the majority. In this instance, when it's a draw, it's a mood issue, whatever it was that we bought for. And so making them go through the process or doing all that necessary stuff is not there. And for the record, we were not going to spend money through John Maxwell to do this, because we have a competent HR department that could have gone nationwide with this. We were going to save money. I'm not for spending money when we got people in our own midst that can do that. But since we voted, I feel like that if we're going to make anybody, it would be John Rowe and George Wilson.
So you're in favor of a permanent?
Based on what we've done here.
You in favor of permanent?
Yes.
Okay. Elizabeth, you in favor of permanent?
Permanent.
Permanent. Are you in favor of permanent?
I am in favor of a permanent. I don't like the process.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm opposed. You in favor?
Permanent.
And you in favor? Okay.
We're done.
Congratulations, guys. And we'll get this out. Thank you. Where's your name?
There you go. There you go.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no. Where's your name?